Our story began in 1991. Over time, the mortgage industry has experienced many changes, but our core values here at CIS have always remained the same: character, integrity, and service. You don't need to be a mortgage expert to get a great financial plan, you just need to work with one. Our focus and dedication have allowed us to help thousands of families reach their dream of homeownership. Whether it be refinancing your current home, buying a manufactured home, or purchasing investment property, we have a product for you. We invite you to find out more by visiting our website at CISHomeLoans.com or like us on Facebook. CIS Home Loans: Mortgage loans made simple. Equal housing lender.
It's 6:00 PM and time to start, so we'll stand before we engage in the meeting and we'll have an invocation and our pledge. You'll stand with me. Father God, we thank you today that we can be here assembled, and Lord, we thank you that we don't have to meet by telephone tonight. Lord, we trust that the things that have been upon our community, the sickness is going away slowly, and we know that your hand is still upon it. Father, we pray tonight for this meeting, and that it'll be conducted in a manner that pleases you. Father, we ask that we would have peace in our nation, peace in our world, and peace in our state. I pray for that peace tonight, in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we sit down. Appreciate our guests that have come and our press that's come to be with us tonight, and our attorney, Mr. Scott Hunt. Well, you're here with us tonight, Scott. Scott's the busiest man I know, except Tracy Estes. They run a close race.
We see each other quite often.
Before we get into the meat of our meeting, I want to just remind all of our citizens how important the 2020 census is to all of us. If you have not participated, if you have not been counted as a citizen of Alabama, so important Alabamians, so important Hamiltonians, you need to be counted. We're counting on you for federal income tax dollars that will come to us every year in this next 10 years because you were counted. We're hoping not to lose a congressional seat because of the population of our state going down instead of up. So you need to be counted. There's many reasons. We could go on and on, but it's very simple to be counted. There's, you probably have received a form at your mailbox, if you have a mailbox. Possibly didn't receive a form if you have a peel box. But you can go online with your computer or your phone. Takes you about 10 minutes or less to participate in the 2020 census, and I'm pleading with you, we're behind. I had a call today concerning the census. Alabama as a whole is a little behind other states, and our area is lagging a little behind some of the other counties in our state. So let's get caught up, let's be counted. I urge you to do this, as your mayor here in Hamilton and the citizens that might hear this outside of our city limits, you need to be counted, and we're counting on you because it's that important. We have Mr. Tracy Estes with us tonight, and before we go into the heart of our meeting and do our business, I'm going to let Tracy give us a few minutes of update. He may have other fish to fry after this, and we'll let him, we'll cut him loose if he needs to be. Tracy, we appreciate you coming tonight.
No, I didn't expect to say anything, Mayor, but I will update you real quickly. First of all, appreciate your comments because you're exactly right. We stand to lose a congressional seat, and if we want to keep having a voice for Alabama and Washington, we've got to make sure we keep all seven members of the House there. So I would encourage and echo your words for everybody to please to take the five or six minutes it takes. It's not invasive, it doesn't ask for personal information. I've told people, I said, if you have filled out an application for a bank loan or a credit card, you have given up way more information than the government already knows than you will ever share through the census report. An update just on two projects. I know we haven't all seen each other as much lately, and we've all been quarantined, I guess, for lack of a better word. Probably 80% of my time in the last two and a half months is trying to secure money for our three hospitals in the district: Hamilton, Hableville, and Winfield. And we've had some success with that. We've got a meeting coming up that we'll be able to share more in the next few days about, but we're hoping to take another step for our Hamilton Hospital, and this could be very, very transformational for our campus if we can pull this off, and I cautiously optimistic that we can do that. So we're working on that. Been doing the same for all three hospitals. I told some sitting out in the foyer earlier that having North Mississippi has been a Godsend for us. Having that parent company has been wonderful. If there is a drawback to it, now is the drawback because we have to go through Tupelo to get everything approved.
I understand.
And where Winfield handled probably the love that had a parent company for recent years, they've probably been blessed by not having one in recent weeks because they have been able to apply for a lot of federal funds, I'm talking about millions of dollars, that has not been available to us to yet through North Mississippi. We're trying to overcome that hurdle. Secondly, I, like a lot of you, probably watched the news last night, and I sat up until after 12, 12:00, 12:30, somewhere around there, and I told Scott I'll end up right after we did the pledge. I just teared up a little bit doing the pledge. I'm like all of you, I love this country, and it breaks my heart to see what we're going through. I couldn't sleep, and I'll build all the more details on this later. We're in the early stages. The Lord just laid it on my heart, I reached out to Alabama House Minority Leader Anthony Daniels last night. He's a fine man, come thinking of him as a friend, and I said, "We've got to do something." I don't know what we can do, I don't know that we will have the answers, but we've got to try. And I just told him, I said, "I have watched and I've read things that happened before I was a boy, the sad chapters in our state's history when it comes to race relations, and I'm not proud of that, and I know none of you are either." Well, somebody's got to write a new chapter, so why shouldn't be us? So we are in the early stages of pulling together about 12 to 14 members of the House, seven on my other party on either side of the aisle. The next week or two, we'll be meeting in Montgomery to start discussions openly, frank, and honest. And here are concerns about both sides. But let's be honest, racism runs multiple tracks. It's not always white versus black. It can be black versus white, it can be white versus Hispanic, or Hispanic versus Asian, or it can be based on religious preferences, or whatever the case may be. We're better than that. I don't have to agree with you to respect you. I don't, and I think we're getting to the point in this country, we're getting to the point we have lost the ability to have what I call civil discourse. If we demonize one another, if we don't agree with each other, and that doesn't say much for us, especially for those of us who profess to be Christians. So I would just encourage your prayers for the members of that group that are going to be coming forward. I've told Anthony, I don't know that we'll come forward with recommendations, we may come up with nothing, but I hope that's not the case. It won't be for a lack of effort. So we're going to start having meetings and see what recommendations we can come up with regardless of which party it is, but I'm sure our black friends can bring conversation to the table that I can't. We're going to have folks that are an older generation than me and a younger generation. Keep in mind, I said, there's now a younger generation than me, adults, but we're going to try to cover a broad spectrum, and we're probably going to hurt some feelings and step on some toes, but if you want to bring back or bring about substantial and substantive change, you've got to have a frank conversation. You just got to sit around the table, and you got to, you got to pray about it first, and you got to recognize that everybody at that table is me and the side of all my God. And that's the conversation we're going in. So I got, I was sitting there, I was up until 3:00 working on that, couldn't sleep, got up this morning about, I don't know, 6:00 or 7:00, whatever it was, and I'm excited. I told my wife, I said, "How many, how many people have the opportunity to sit in a position like each of you do here to bring about real change? You guys do it every day for the town of Hamilton?" Well, I want to, I want to have my chance to do that for the people of this state, and I hope the day will come, if the good Lord cares. Scott called, I'll tell Scott after the meeting, while I talk about this next reference, I'm hoping there's a day going to come in this country, if the Lord cares, that there'll be children that sit before us and say, "Who was Paul Connor?" I want our kids to be in a new era where we judge people by their character and their integrity and their honesty, and that has nothing to do with color. So I'm excited, and again, I'd like to listen to your prayers. I think y'all know if I hit you anywhere, y'all got my telephone number, all you got to do is call, I'll be out in 15 minutes. Appreciate you, Mayor.
Tracy, we appreciate you being with us, and those words mean a lot to me. I know your heart's in it, or you wouldn't be in it, so all the best to you guys that are trying to work on this matter. And is there any questions of Tracy at this time from the council or anyone from the audience? He's usually ready with an answer.
We'll know, we'll find out.
Y'all passed a budget down there in Montgomery. Was it a tough budget this year, or did it go pretty well?
It actually went rather well. We were blessed. This is where I'll give credit to those long before my time. As most of you know, in 2010, the Republican-led Alabama House, which they took over for the first time since Reconstruction Act and Civil War in 2010, and the first thing, one of the first things they did in the following year's session in 2011 was adopt the Road and Reserve Act. And what that does in education, you don't just get to project like we used to and say, "Oh, I think we may raise X number of dollars next year." No. You take the previous 15 years' education budget, drop the worst year, that's not to skew the numbers, take the other four or 10 years, average them together, and that's your cap. That's as much as you can spend. Now, if more comes in above that, I wish I had the wrong numbers, I might have to bring them with me tonight, you can expend that money later during that fiscal year for which you're drafting the budget, and like last year, the cap, the budget was around $7.1 million, but above yours good, and the state brought in an education budget, brought in, I think, an additional $512 million above what the cap had been set. Well, what we did this time, we released $260 million, that's going to be, let me take that back. 15, the first 15 billion is going to be used to service the new public schools construction bond that we passed, and the Marion County Schools, if I'm, if my math, I know we're getting $786,000 for technology monies, and then we're getting an additional, I'll check these numbers, where he's got like 2.4 billion to do work around the county school system. One, because all, first, the money's based on student population, and there's other forms after that. But anyway, and then we, so we're using 15 billion off the top to pay the first year's interest on the $1.25 billion student construction bond we just approved. That leaves about 497, I guess, 260 of that is going to come back to the schools to be divided into the technology money, and like I said, Marion County's got like 700 something thousand, and the remaining is going to be set aside for a rainy day. Well, we're also now looking, I would not be surprised if the governor doesn't bring it as part of a special session, not just for that topic, but if we don't, then next year, I imagine, the groundwork's already been labored, we're going to do a Road and Reserve Act for the general fund. And I said all that to say this, the Education Trust Fund, despite all that's going on right now and what we're facing, Alabama is one of like three or four states that was able to grow, the education budget grew by $91 million this year because you had a cap. Since you didn't, you know, you got extra monies in, and so we're going to do the same thing for the general fund, and having those rainy day accounts is really why it's helped save our spending. And I'll give credit to those long before I got there for doing that work.
I got one more question for you. Will we have classroom experience this, in this school year? Are we going to be online with everything?
I would like to defer to State Superintendent Eric Mackey to answer that question, but my gut tells me there will be some form of classroom instruction. It sounds as if we're working toward to allow parents who would choose to do so to keep their kids at home if they feel like they need to for an extra four or six weeks or some generic time period, and do online testing. But guys, y'all forgive me, I'm 52 years old, I'm an old student. You cannot replace that classroom teacher. You can't. And so online learning has its place, I'm not saying that it doesn't, but I know my kids are grown, I'm glad they didn't have to go through this, but now I tell everyone, I don't have two kids, I've got 7,500 across the district. What I think is best for my kids is in that classroom with that teacher giving them that personal hands-on attention.
Thank you.
Because I'm optimistic.
Any other questions for Tracy? Okay, we've got several items to cover, then we'll get into our regular meeting. I'd like to, item number one, recommend that we approve the minutes from the May 18 council meeting. We'd need a motion and second on that.
I'll make the motion.
June made the motion. We approve our minutes. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Have a second. All in favor? Thank you very much. Item two is a recommendation to approve the accounts payable bills for May 2020, and we'd need a motion on our accounts payable bills.
I'll make that motion.
We got a motion from Wade, and we need a second. Tammy, second. All in favor of paying our accounts payable bills? Thank you. Item three is a recommendation to approve a job description, or the job description, for the sanitation department supervisor, and that would be Mr. Mike Johnson. And I think each of you have a copy of the sanitation department job description with an ambiguous clause that's kind of a catch-all. All these items that are listed, and then any other unexpected things arising but unrecognized as a part of this list, so we want to approve it with that clause in there. If we could get a motion on that, please.
I'll make it.
We got a motion. We need a second.
I have a second.
June, second. All in favor? Thank you.
I'm no. And I'm going to be no on a few other things, and based on my interpretation of the handbook, the way all this came about was not in accordance with the way it's laid out in the handbook. All of this should have been handled before the job was awarded. I mean, the, there should have been a written request for the new position because it's not in the budget, then the job description should have been agreed upon, then the pay should have been determined, and then we were to determine how we pushed the job, but that isn't the way any of this happens, so I'm going to be voting no.
Okay. All right. Have you heard Tammy's reasoning for her vote tonight, which would be no on some matters? Item number four would be approving a job description for the street department supervisor, that being Mr. Kevin Walker, who's been put in that position, who was a member of the street department and a former supervisor with the Hamilton Street Department. We'd need a motion to approve Kevin's job description also at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion from Wade. We need a second.
I have a second.
Herb made a second. All in favor of that? And Tammy's already said she's voting no. Item five is a recommendation to raise the pay of the newly appointed street department supervisor, Kevin Walker, to $39,052 per year, which is an increase of $2,340 per year. Kevin will also be changed to salary versus wages. Instead of an hourly salary, he'll be on a set salary, and after six months, if Kevin's doing a good job, then we'll consider another $2,340 increase at that time. I'd like to make that as a recommendation to the council.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion. We need a second. Herb made the second. All in favor of raising Kevin's pay $2,340 per year? Raise your hand, please. Those opposed? Okay.
And I will say this, and I didn't know how to make y'all understand it Wednesday when I tried to say it, but y'all need to address Mike's pay as the new, because we don't have a heading for your pay. So, I mean, we have a sanitation, not a sanitation, we have a street department supervisor pay, but we don't have a sanitation department supervisor pay. So I didn't know how to make y'all understand that Wednesday, and I don't know that I can make you understand it tonight, but Mike's the one that traded jobs, so he needs, his title needs...
We love to trade a job.
Right, but, but yours is new. Kevin's, Kevin's title existed, yours doesn't, so there needs to be a sanitation department supervisor pay. Does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I guess.
There's no title for your pay.
We don't have any of them separated on our pay scale. I mean, we have a pay scale, but we don't have like a supervisor's pay scale that breaks down in different quarters, unless there's something, you know.
We don't have like a supervisor position.
We have a pay scale that's like the different hourly pays, but as far as supervisor, we don't have that.
But I don't know how to say it. Somebody just needs to say, Mike is the new street department, no, sanitation department supervisor, and his pay will be. Because, do you see what I'm trying to say? Say it for me, please.
No, I think you're saying, fine, you're just saying, we, Mike is like the supervisor, and he gets paid X amount for being a supervisor. If we want to create, create that, I mean, we could...
I mean, you've already created his position.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think we could do that, just say, he's the sanitation department supervisor, and he's going to get paid whatever Mike gets paid.
And you may not need to. I mean...
If we just have it labeled as supervisor, and he's a supervisor now, I don't know that we can change it. We haven't done that for him the other...
Unless it was, you know, a special circumstance where somebody was hired in and it was discussed at that time, where maybe there was a negotiation and they, they named the price.
All right. I was just trying to make sure that you get paid.
I'll make sure of that.
Okay. I was just trying to make sure you get paid legally, by the rules.
Does that need to be a motion that's added to this meeting tonight to set Mike's salary at the same salary he's drawing currently? We didn't mess with his money.
Yeah, we could do that.
What it's saying is, though, his position, this salary at his new position that he's got now.
Okay. Would you make that motion, June?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
June made the motion.
I want him to get paid.
So we can pay Mike. Mike, you're in good, you're in good hands here.
Thank you, dear.
Can we get a second to that motion?
Yeah, I want the man paid.
Okay. Let's all vote to pay Mike in his new position.
I'm not going to vote to pay you, but I wanted to make sure that that was addressed.
I remember that.
Okay. I didn't vote to pay you either, though. Do you remember that? Ten times I did.
Okay. Thank you for setting us straight on that, Tammy. We hardly know how to do business in this city. We just muddle through it. We'll need, item six, a recommendation to close Calvin Circle, and we've been working on this for some time now. I got Mike to figure up the materials that we did out there last summer for Mr. Calvin, and for this closing, he's agreed to pay us 50% of our materials bill. Is that correct, Mike?
That is correct, yes.
Which is between $2,500 and $3,000. We've, we've got it written down, we'll find it, we'll give y'all an accounting if we close this road. He's, that's in the deal. I'd like to make a recommendation that we close one leg of Calvin Circle and make it Calvin Road.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we got a motion. Need a second.
I think you said this, but okay with all the neighbors?
Yes, sir. I had a copy of that signed agreement from the people that own property in there. It's signed and executed right there.
Have we had the public hearing?
If we had all the public notices, and then it got delayed, so if y'all vote to go ahead and do it, we'll, we'll run the notices, but the signature by the landowners gives the okay. That's basically them waiting their public notice, public hearing. But if y'all, y'all vote on it tonight, we'll run out the other notices and everything and make sure that it's okay with the general public.
So we're voting to close it tonight, and then you're going to run all the notices, and then we'll come back to vacate it?
We're voting to, to proceed with, because there's been an issue about whether or not we were even going to do that or not, so if y'all want to go ahead with this with the terms that the mayor has propounded with Mr. Calvin, then we'll go ahead and get the rest of the notices and everything else, to have final closer hearing and all that kind of stuff.
So there'll be another vote after all the utilities have been notified, and if we vote to vacate it at that time, then half of it will go to the landowner on one side and half of it will go to the landowner on the other side.
That's right.
So basically, tonight, all you're demanding is permission to proceed.
That's right.
And then there'll be the public hearing and all the notifications and all that.
Right. And get Mr. Calvin some security that is going, going forward.
Okay, but it's not final.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
That a motion.
So we already had a motion.
Wade did.
Wade made the motion.
I'll, I'll run it.
Motion would be to proceed with closing, proper closing procedures for Calvin Circle. We will come back to another meeting for a final vote on this with the public hearing held before the vote. So if we vote yes to work with this tonight, then we'll get all the proper documentation back to another meeting as soon as that can be done. All right, we got a motion and a second.
I have a second as a motion.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? We'll proceed then, Scott, if you want to do the work that's necessary. Item seven is to allow the sanitation department supervisor, Mike Johnson, to place an order for a new garbage truck and the cans that it will take to operate this system for the city of Hamilton. These purchases were approved in the 2020 budget, and Mike, would you like to tell us about the meeting we held this morning? Will?
Sure. This morning, we had Will Hobart come in from Eaglewood Woodman, and just to look a bit further, the new garbage truck, including included, which is, of course, the truck itself is a freight line, company's engine, and Allison transmission, which has a five-year warranty on it. It also includes 2,300 and somewhere around 80 cans that the company, Schaefer, will provide to us, deliver them to each resident, assemble them, and place them in the spot it should go.
Set up the routes.
Sir?
Set up the routes.
Yeah, and they have a route planning for us, so live by routes that we change. Some of them may stay the same, but more likely most of our of them will change to a different date. And we discussed some financing options and such as that, so they've got a truck that's supposed to be in mid-July. Hopefully, we get our money put on that truck and go ahead and get our cans and things ordered. Uh, hopefully we get our name put on that truck and, and go ahead and get our cans and things ordered. Take about six weeks or so to get the cans in, so, uh, maybe we'll get the truck a couple of weeks prior to the cans and then the distribution of those will take probably, uh, three weeks or so to get them all placed out. So, hopefully by, uh, late August first, September, we'll, we'll start our new collection system and go from there.
Am I correct that those cans remain the property of the city?
They will be the property of the city. That's right. And we'll go off of our, uh, water list. Anybody that pays, pays water bill and garbage, uh, will get a can. So, uh, we, we're going to do our best to have a good clean list that you can work off of to, to route planning off of.
Well, Will met with us this morning. He agreed to, uh, get us a quote for five-year annual payment financing, and that would be seventy-five thousand nine forty-five eighty-three. Later Angela and I were talking and she said, why don't we just pay for the garbage truck and if we need some money later, borrow some money? She said, well, our numbers are good enough. I think we can just write the check. So, what's your pleasure on that, three-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand?
Well, I think if we got the money and go forward to spend it, I think we ought to go ahead and bank for it. If we need any money, we don't always turn it back around and borrow. You know, you're just paying the interest when you got the money laying there in the bank.
Don't you think our numbers will stand up for this purchase?
They do.
I do too.
How much is it?
Three-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, six-hundred-eighty-two dollars and forty-seven cents.
You're saving almost twenty-two thousand dollars plus the interest fee. Well, that may be included, but either way, you're saving at least twenty-two thousand dollars.
The, uh, the, the quote came down to roughly sixteen thousand from the first quote we got from Will because of, uh, freight expenses and, or petroleum products being cheaper right now. And petroleum is used in plastic manufacturing, I understand heavily. I'd like to, uh, get a consensus from the council tonight to place this order. And, uh, we double checked about the, uh, bid this morning with Will. He is not the only garbage truck salesman, but he is on the, tell us what he's in, Mike, that makes him competitive.
Ingram and, and the City of Hamilton also is in the, uh, a member of the NJPA, which is a-
Guarantees that-
Cooperative. It's basically everything is bid out already.
It's accepted at state level in little bids.
It's the same organization when we bought the track code.
I told him this morning-
It looks like everything now, not everything, but most everything as far as equipment and vehicles, most everybody now is a member of that NJPA or, or some cooperative like that where most of your equipment's-
Cause I thought your question was a pertinent question that the other day when you asked it, Tammy, and I wanted to clarify that with Will this morning. I said, Will, are you the only action in town? He said, no, there's other garbage truck salesmen, but he said, they don't come to you with a routing plan and a training plan. They'll give you the truck and say, go at it, you know? And he said, my company backs up what they do and we fix our equipment if it breaks. And he said, we'll lend you a truck while we got yours down if necessary.
So, because they're a member of this cooperative, and we are too, it does not have to be bid out, is what you're saying? Okay.
Yep. And there's more than-
Scott's agreeing.
There's more than, than, uh, one of those organizations, so, uh, I, I think he may have mentioned the year that Alabama adopted that. I don't know what it would be that you're able to do that. Did, did he mention the year or something? Maybe two thousand and ten or something like that. But what it allows you to do is if, if you've got a specific, you know, if you want a Ford or a Caterpillar, then you can, all that stuff is already bid out. You're not necessarily bound to something that you don't want because it's the cheapest price.
The two thousand dollars that you spent last month to summit truck, was that for one of the garbage trucks?
Yes. And there was one on there for Ingram for seven hundred and something that was-
Nine hundred and seventy-one.
Another. So, recently we've spent a lot of money on, on trucks.
Even after we get the-
Ten years is a long time for a garbage truck.
Even after we get this new truck, Mike will have to have one other standby truck at least to, to service, uh, the housing authority areas. They, they can't put their cans because of parallel parking to where we can reach them with the arm, so they're going to work the housing area and some dumpsters is not right, Mike, with the old style truck. But most of our garbage will be picked up by the one-arm truck, uh, other than those special areas that they'll have to work with.
But the truck that you're keeping, you're not asking for another truck. You're keeping one of the two that we have to be the backup.
Well, we have three trucks, so, yeah, we'll keep, uh-
The newer, or the better, mainly than you were?
We'll probably-
Use our newest truck and-
We'll probably sell-
Keep, we may keep three, uh, depending on, you know, if, if one of them breaks down, we need two, we're going to need two trucks. So, and if garbage continues to be like it is now, uh, you know, we're somewhere around thirteen or so thousand. Thirteen tons somewhere a day now, so, uh-
With, with all that said, um, I do need a motion on that recommendation to let Mike go ahead and place that order with, uh, Will Holwader's company. And we clarified that this association he's in will keep us from having an underbid situation. He said, everybody that's selling this freightliner truck is going to get the same price. It just won't come with the options of training your route man and training your public how to use the system. It's, it's a system different than what we're doing now.
I'm sure over the years, the last probably three trucks that the city purchased came from the same company. They're, they're a big company in Birmingham.
So, I'd like to recommend this for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Jean made a motion, need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor of placing an order? Thank you. Item eight is a recommendation to allow the water department supervisor Rodney Williams to proceed with emergency repairs and relocation of sewer lines located on Normandy Drive. If you'll stand and tell us more about the, uh, problems you're having and, and why you want to go ahead with the project, Rodney would appreciate it.
Well, this is a sewer line I've talked to y'all about in the previous meeting about the, it crosses forty-three highway and goes down Melville State and does a ninety-degree turn right there in front of Franklin Apartments and goes out into the woods and does another ninety and comes right back down the river. And what I would like to do is take that ninety manhole out and, and straight, shoot a straight shot down the river and hit a manhole and let it go right down to a lift station.
But you said that it wouldn't cut out all the turns. It will for a section, but there'll still be, there'll still be sewer on the-
The apartments and everything will still be on the sewer line, but we're taking ninety percent of the flow off of it by taking it straight down.
Will, um-
And we've talked about this. I, we had the, we had the backup to that apartment that apartments did. A substantial amount of damage and, and money to, to replace it, to repair. And I, I feel like this is kind of an emergency fix that we need to, we need to get fixed. I'm, I'm taking it personally. I, I check it just about every day. Sometimes there are other days to make sure that we're not going to have another blockage until it's fixed.
And that's extreme caution.
Yes.
We don't normally check a manhole every other day or every day, uh, to see if there's a flow. It's supposed to be there, but in this case, we've had lines backing up. The clean out on these lines is significant if we have to hire professionals to come in here and help us with this problem. And sometimes that's the only way we can fix it.
Rodney, do you know how much you spent on it in the last year of cleaning it out and working on it? I'm not just in a ballpark, I'm, I'm no-
Yes. Well, every time I've called video and done it, it's a lot of Birmingham. We come up here and, and clean up my outlets, probably ten to fifteen thousand dollars every time I call. And that's usually about twice a year.
About three trips is of their services, what it'd take to fix this problem? And the problem's not going to go away because it's a bad design.
So, you think it's going to be less than bid law?
Yeah.
And we're working with Scott, Rodney's working with Scott to get us a grease ordinance so Rodney can be our inspector for all the people who have commercial grease traps and look at their records of when they were pumped and that they're keeping them up to standards that's acceptable and not putting the grease down our lines where we're finding it. We're finding it with huge clogs, four and five feet long, solid clogs that we can't dissolve and, and sometimes even more extensive than that. And, uh, there's a lot of grease being dumped directly into our sewer line, and we've got to also figure that out, where it's coming from. That's why Rodney's going to become the inspector. He's taken some classes to learn how to recognize the problem and how to read the, uh, information that's given them when they have the pumping done, the chart on that. And Rodney will know if they're complying with the rules and he's willing to do that inspection for the city.
Rodney, have you got a price on what it's going to cost to do this job?
It's, it's going to be in the forties, forty thousand in, in that area.
Oh, boy. Since you got any choice of what it's going to save you if you're spending on it, what it's going to cost to get it fixed.
So, if it's less than the bid, why are we declaring it an emergency?
Well, if it was to go over the fifty thousand, if you declared emergency, you don't, you, you don't have to worry about bidding it out anyway.
Right, but to be an emergency, I'm just not sure that it fits the criteria as an emergency. I mean, it, it's not something that happens suddenly and unexpectedly. We've been having grease problems for the last six years.
Yeah, but we just spent-
We spent a bunch of money because it clogged up.
And now Franklin Apartments.
Right. And we've been having the same problem on the other side of town. It just hasn't cost that much.
But I consider it emergency enough. I go check it every day.
And I appreciate that. I hope you're checking the one on the other side of town too, because those people would appreciate it too.
Sounds to me like it's an emergency anyway from what you're going through. Needs to be fixed. I make a motion. We fix it that way.
Think we're breaking our own kneecap to do it this way, Scott? Okay. We'd ask for a second on that motion then. Got a second? All in favor of rerouting that line? Any opposed?
No, because it's my understanding with the emergency, if we can do this without an engineer, it's just gonna, so, I don't know.
Any other business tonight?
Have you heard anything like about a rec center since you've gone over there?
Uh, the rec center, we're waiting on some issues before we have any children playing there. We're hoping the governor's, uh, address this week will take care of some of that, Herb. I talked with Tim this morning about the splash pad and we sent him some additional information this afternoon about what some of the other cities are doing. He doesn't want us to get into a violation of any state law or rule about splash pads. And he thinks sometime this summer, we're going to be offering that splash pad, so he told me this morning, but he don't have a date set yet. You got any comments on that, Scott, as to whether we'd be in violation of our splash pad?
No, I, I think a lot of places are looking at ways to do that and, uh, so maybe we just need to figure out how to do it.
He and I talked about it this morning. We're going to talk some more. I, I think several of the other water parks are going to go ahead and open. Haylerville opened their pool today. Uh, Giewin's opening June the sixth. Some of the folks that Angela reached out to, some city clerks, were giving her updates. Some of them are open, some of them are going to be open. Is that correct, Angela? Thought that's how I read it. So, we're probably going to try to, uh, prompt our splash pad to get open. Today, Tim and I talked about our ball fields. We haven't approved anything for children to come and play at our ball fields at this point. But we've had some travel ball, people wanting to rent our facilities. And I said, until we can offer sports to our own children, I don't want to rent out our spaces for travel ball. I'd, I said, I'm, our kids play in when anyone rents or leases our, uh, space for a tournament. And I said, I want our kids to play first. And Tim and I agreed on that this morning. So, I'm hoping we get some relief on, on the ball fields, Herb, and that's, well, that's a good question. We've got a terrific gem over there with, uh, heat and air and not being able to use it night.
Daddy hates to pay three million dollars if not good to use.
Now, I don't, when are seniors going to resume activities? Do you know?
I'm not certain.
There's been a little delay on the seniors coming back.
I think they're doing daily meals now?
They're getting meals, but they're not assembling over there. We want, we want an opportunity for them. If they want to come, we don't want to impress on anyone to come and risk themselves. We'd like to see Hamilton reopen as soon as possible. So, we'll keep pressing that issue, Herb, and, uh, and trying to get it to open as soon as we can. Tracy, again, thanks for all the hard work you're doing and helping the hospitals is an enormous, uh, thing that you've done out to manage.
That's the healthcare issue. That's an important issue.
And we're proud to hear that the schools are going to get ample funds to, to operate and run and get up to par on a lot of things they need.
It wasn't many to run the discussion we, that application we formed, that form we, we I sent to you about the coupon incurred expenses that we said we can get some money back from that.
Yeah. I asked Tim to get me numbers. He had ordered some uniforms for Little League. They were already in. He's not going to get to use them, but, you know, that's expense that we've been out. He's giving me numbers on all that kind of stuff.
And that applies, of course, to any other city function as well, or it's police, or it's sanitation. Any expenses we've incurred in relation to COVID-19, we can seek reimbursement.
I'll check with the other departments and see if, if they've spent money for sanitizers, masks or anything like that. I think we're due reimbursements on that also.
I'm going to try to make a run later this week and let us, let us, like, correct our hands from government. It's been a lady. You never know what a trip, you know, in face, a per, face-to-face, in-person visit might make a difference for your community from there you're getting reimbursed. Cause you're not guaranteed to get it and you're not guaranteed to get the full reimbursement. So, any impression we can make on, have a face-to-face discussion could help us.
Anything else we need to cover tonight? Angela, Scott, you got anything else you want to talk about?
Got the, of course, we'll be posting the election about mid-June. I'll be running that in the paper. Qualifying time will be, uh, July the seventh through the twenty-first. A lot of people call, a lot of them say, I'm going to wait the last minute, last possible minute, and I'm going to come in. Please don't do that, because there's a lot of stuff you have to do. Also, at the probate judge's office, which I believe they close at four-thirty, so don't come in here at five. You know, please don't wait till the last minute if this is something you're thinking about doing.
Okay. We appreciate everybody coming. If we could get a motion to- If we could get a motion to adjourn in a second, we'll adjourn this meeting. Wade made a motion to adjourn. Gene made a second. All in favor? Thank you very much.